Oh my God. I need a passport update for this app. No, I have the, I have the hard copy, but I won't have the materials. I'm gonna ask Peggy to update me. Right, when we're half an hour late. Okay, apologies for our late start. Thank you for your patience. We were, I will now call the meeting to order. This is the Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, February 13th, 2023. If you'll join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We have a recognition for Officer Dylan Glenn.
Thought it was on, sorry. Thank you for yelling that out. This is, I'm asking the Chief of Police to join us up here for the recognition of Officer Dylan Glenn.
Thank you, everybody. First, I'd like to acknowledge the officers in the back for coming to support one of their own. We have some of the finest women and men in Delaware County, and in fact, the country, working for us here in Radnor Township. So, we wouldn't be here without the support of our awesome community and this Board of Commissioners. I asked the Township Manager, Mr. White, and President Maroni to join us, and I'll be very specific. But this is in reference to Officer Dylan Glenn, who is to my right, where he was acknowledged for something. And I'll read it off because I think it really solidifies the work that goes on here, sometimes unnoticed. The best praise a police officer can get is from their fellow coworkers. But when something comes from the outside, it really is amazing. I would like to acknowledge Sergeant Dan Lunger for bringing these items to our attention as his platoon supervisor, and supporting his efforts and making us aware. Before we get started, on a personal note, his biggest congratulations should be in his recent engagement. So, congratulations, Officer Glenn. All right, good luck with that. The Philadelphia Chapter of the Military Order of the World Wars honored local police officers at their annual luncheon. The Radnor Police selected one deserving officer, and Sergeant Lunger forward the name of Officer Glenn. Specifically, Officer Glenn is being recognized for his tireless efforts to keep the Radnor community safe. In 2022, he led his platoon in self-initiative activities, including arrests. His notable arrests include the seizure of an assault rifle during a vehicle stop. In a recent incident, a subject fled from Officer Glenn during a motor vehicle stop, pursued into Lower Marion where he crashed and subsequently ran. Two people were taken into custody. During that time, we located a gun that was thrown, an illegal weapon which was thrown on the roof of a local business in Lower Marion Township. Lower Marion Police and ourselves worked together, and Officer Glenn had the arrest for that. That handgun was secured and is now in processing, seeing if it was involved in any other crimes. In another incident, his outstanding investigative work led to the identification arrest of a delivery driver who threatened one of our residents to shoot a woman and her young child. Officer Glenn is well-respected amongst his fellow officers in the community. We would like to, we would like to recognize Officer Glenn for outstanding performance and being honored by the Military Order of World Wars, right here in Delaware County.
Congratulations again to Officer Glenn, and thank you to all of the Radnor Township Police Department members who were here with us tonight. I will now announce that we were, apologies for being late again. We were in executive session where we were discussing legal and personnel matters. Also looking up. So there is, I'm gonna make a note on the agenda. Under the Business Agenda 3D will be removed from the agenda tonight. That was to be a discussion of Villanova University application. That will be heading towards the zoning hearing board. There may be people who had intended to make comment on that item, so I wanted to announce it now. So that if you would like to use the public comment at the top of the meeting to make any statements on that item, or anything else, I will open it now to public participation for either that issue that will not be voted on tonight, or any other issue on the agenda. Keep in mind that you also have an opportunity to speak to every item as we get to it on the agenda. So at this time, I will see if there is public participation at the top of the meeting.
Sorry, Commissioner Maroni, just real quick, just a quick point of order, but that doesn't, I can still bring that up under New Business. Is that correct, or Old Business?
You can, yes, you can bring what you would like up under New Business.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'll go, let me, let me just go on top of that as a point of order. Even if we discussed it tonight, my opinion is we shouldn't have been voting on it because the description is discussion. There was never, there's no language in there to indicate that we'd be voting on anything. So, you know, keep it on, strip it off, you know, we wouldn't be voting on an issue.
Thank you for making that point. Anyone would like to speak from the community?
Do I turn this on? It's on, right? Good evening. Just wanted to show support for the lighting, the Wayne Little League. I think it's a great project, and we don't have to pay for it, so just want to give my love to it. My son's starting this year, so hopefully y'all vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public?
My name is Sarah Carroll, and I live at 22 Aldwin Lane in Villanova. And I'm here because I watched last week's Planning Commission meeting, and I heard Villanova University's representatives asking for zoning relief to add 232 parking spots in the project that I believe you were going to discuss tonight, and is, they're presenting to the zoning board on Thursday. And they said last week that this project is not because the university needs more parking now, or because they plan to expand their student body, but because under Radnor's existing code, the university's future building plans will legally require more parking. I wanted to bring up a point tonight that Mr. Schuman and others made at the Planning Commission meeting, which is that Villanova University is, is rich in public transportation. And I have lived right there for 15 years. We have direct rail service, of course, east and west on the R5, and we have trolley service north and southeast, and we have the 106 bus on Lancaster Avenue. When SEPTA completes its full bus network redesign in 2024, it plans to have buses running on Lancaster Avenue every 15 minutes during the day with service around the clock. And that's a, that's a huge increase over the current bus service, which runs hourly and doesn't run at night on Sundays. By bringing up transit in the context of the proposed parking deck, which would be right by the athletic facilities, so obviously convenient for people attending events, I'm not necessarily suggesting that a significant number of event visitors to campus will arrive via transit, but I am saying that campus parking for students and staff is fungible. And there are two factors that have either changed recently, or, or will change soon, that may make parking projections for Villanova University different than they have been in the past. The first is that proposed change to SEPTA bus service. A year from now, when there's a bus every 15 minutes, if I'm a student and I want to pop over to CVS, if I'm 21, I want to go to Kelly's for a beer and get home safely, it's going to be very easy for me to hop on a bus, and I'll have an app on my phone that tells me exactly when the next bus or train is coming. For the handful of things that students may need that aren't accessible by transit, Zip Cars are also available right on campus. I'm not to mention Uber and Lyft. For a combination of reasons, mainly costs and climate and convenience, we see young people in the U.S. shifting away from cars. It may be gradual, but it's steady. The percentage of college-age Americans without driver's licenses today is twice what it was when I was in college. The second factor that has changed is that the university has new dorms, and we have not yet seen the full effects of having 1,100 more beds on campus. In her presentation last week, Mary Lou Smith of Villanova University said that freshmen and sophomores generally are not allowed to have cars on campus. So if in those first two years, they discover that it's pretty easy to get around without a car, then when those students become juniors and seniors, I think it's quite likely that a, that a higher percentage of them will decide not to take on the expense and the hassle of keeping a car. In other words, a higher percentage than in the university's historical experience might suggest when more students were living off-campus. Will it be a huge percentage? Maybe not, but even if it's only 3%, with 3,500 juniors and seniors, that's more than 100 fewer cars. For those reasons, I believe the university has not provided a compelling case to raise the height of the existing parking structure to 50 feet and add more than 200 spots. So it, it's my hope and expectation that the zoning board will, will not grant relief for this project. I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment?
Hello, my name is Lynn Ellis, and I live at 908 Lewis Lane. I realize that this, what I'm going to speak to about has probably been voted on in some capacity, but I've recently been made aware that there is a proposal to develop 567 Darby Paley Road where Holly Tree House is located. It is a stone house circa 1720, built by Thomas Thomas. Holly Tree House is listed as 31, Site 31, on the Radnor Township Comprehensive Plan Technical Index C Historic Asset Inventory. The house is one of the oldest remaining homes in Radnor, and it may even be the oldest. Another parcel on the same historical asset list is also proposed for development. It contains Hickory Hall, listed as 51, Site 51. Described as "a large federal-style stone house built circa 1840 by Levi Lewis II, situated on the hill northwest of Holly Tree House and on Ardrossen." The Historical Society was donated an Indian basket by R. Alexander Montgomery of the Montgomery Scott family, and it was found at Hickory Hall in 1920. The origin is to believe, its origin is believed to be 18th century. Painted stone artifacts have been found around Wigwam Run, which is a creek that runs in the area of development. And it's believed that there was an Indian village at that location. Perhaps an archaeological dig should be required before any development is approved in order to protect our Radnor history from further loss. And I believe the scattered site ordinance, which was proposed by Commissioner John Nagel years ago, should be adopted as soon as possible to protect our assets. Thank you.
Any other comment? I will move on to the Consent Agenda. Is there any public comment on any item on the Consent Agenda? I'm not seeing any. Is there any item on the Consent Agenda that a Commissioner would like to remove for further discussion? I am not seeing any. Can I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda?
So moved.
And a second? All in favor say aye. Unanimous approval, thank you. So we now move to our Business Agenda. The first item of, is the appointment of Dr. Lisa Bannister to the Board of Health for a four-year term. Is there any, any public comment on this appointment? Is there any comments from Commissioners? I will ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second? All in favor say aye. Thank you very much. Moving on to Resolution 2023-15. This is authorizing the township to approve a memorandum of understanding with Radnor Wayne Little League to install, operate, and maintain Anki Park Ball Field B field lighting. I'm gonna start with asking for a motion. And a second?
Second.
Okay. I will, I know we've got some folks here. We had a wonderful presentation at our last meeting. I will speak from, my personal position is that this is a great project, really excited about it. The offer is wonderful. So I know that we have some folks who want to speak to it. Some of the gentlemen did a great job at the presentation. You're welcome to say more. But I, before we got folks up here, sort of, you know, really fighting for this, I wanted to get a sense of the board, so that at least you know what you're responding to. So if the, if there's any member of the board who would like to have further debate and discussion about this issue before we vote, before we turn it to public, comment, I'd like to open it up. Otherwise, I'm looking for some nods that this is a good project.
How much time do I have?
I do want to hear from folks, but I wanted to know what you were up against. This isn't a fight. This is a really wonderful community opportunity, and I just wanted to be sure that, that you knew that before you're coming up. But love to hear from you. I see you're light on Commissioner Larkin, do you have something?
I can be talked out of it.
That's part of why I'm doing this, because he could be talked out of it if it goes on too long. I'm teasing, but I do welcome anyone who would like to speak to the issue to please come up to the mic. And we'd be, oh, sorry.
Yep, I just, two issues I wanted to clarify. And again, appreciate Radnor Wayne Little League coming before the board last, last meeting. It was a great presentation, very detailed, very thorough, and answered a lot of my questions, and I think my, my fellow colleagues' questions. Tammy, just, you know, clarification and to be on the record. Right now, I think it's Devon, Devon Lane, or South Devon, whatever those ballparks are, they're used for adult league games. Would those games, would they petition or lobby to be able to use Field B to go under the lights?
I don't envision a scenario where we would ever permit that, just given that that would include adults playing on a very short fenced field. I would imagine everyone that steps up to the plate could probably hit it over the fence, so. And it just wouldn't be the appropriate size for adult softball, so that's not something that we would permit on that site, at the Anki site.
All right, appreciate it. And then my, my other issue, the current text before us on hours of operation, is it still till 10:00 PM?
It is. So that's the way that was drafted into the MOU. We did give them a half an hour buffer to allow for the egress lighting that they're also going to be installing to allow folks to transition to the parking lots up until 10:30.
Okay. So the one issue, and as a parent with, with four children who play sports, the one issue I hear all the time is how late children are practicing. And so I have, you know, this is our one opportunity to influence this policy and how this is going to play out, and I'm supportive of the lights. But I would like to see during the school year, Sunday through Thursday, that the lights be turned off at 9:30. Otherwise, we have kids out there till 10 o'clock, not getting home till probably 10:30. And if they're like my kids, then they need to eat, so we're looking at 11 o'clock. And we just went through three years of listening to how important sleep is, and then getting kids up early in the morning for, for the school day. So I'm going to motion to amend to reflect during the school year, the hours of operations are till 9:30 PM. And that's, and that's Sunday through Thursday, so Friday and Saturday nights, they could hold games, and it would be the 10 o'clock shut-off time.
So I hear a motion. Is there a second?
I hear you. When you have your kid, and it's 11:15, and they haven't done their homework, they become monsters at 6 o'clock the next morning. So, yeah. And as long as it's consistent with other lighting, I don't know what the, the high school is, but I think they should all be pretty much consistent. So if that part of the MOU needs to get re-amended or addressed later on, I would, I would be fine with it. But yeah, I hear where you're coming from. I can't argue that it's that unreasonable.
So I guess I'm gonna ask Tammy, why is the 10 o'clock hour, what are the hours in, you know, park, is it consistent? We don't have lights, but I guess why the 10 o'clock hour?
Well, typically, we don't, on a motion to amend, we just vote. There's no discussion.
I will call the vote. All in favor of the amendment? Opposed? The amendment does not pass. I would like to have that question answered. Just why is the 10 o'clock hour chosen?
Well, I think we, so we, obviously, you know, this was a proposal that was put forth by Radnor Wayne Little League that we entertained, and we kept that consistent with how we observe the practice at Radnor Memorial Park currently, in terms of the lights shut off and the time.
Well, currently at Radnor Memorial, lights shut off at 9:00 PM.
Only if a user requests them to shut off at 9:00 PM. Otherwise, our, our hard shut-off timeline is 10 o'clock.
Right.
The only time we'll make an exception is if they reach out and they have some sort of an extenuating circumstance, but I can't even remember the last time that happened.
Okay, I will open this for public comment. Anybody care to speak to the issue? I'm not seeing any, so I will call the vote on the original Resolution 2023-15. All in favor say aye. Passes unanimously. Again, on behalf of the Commissioners and the Township, we are very grateful. Thank you. Can't wait to see those first games. Okay, that cleared the room. We're down to Item C, which is Discussion and Direction: Municipal Funding of Community Organizations for 2024 and Going Forward. Commissioner Abel, I believe you brought this to the agenda. Would you like to open?
I did bring it to, I did request it to be on the agenda tonight, and this is, you know, a conversation that I know I've had as a member of the board for the last six years, primarily around budget season. And so, you know, we, we typically vote in, in October or November, and every year, we all identify this as an issue that needs to be addressed. And for the last five years, you know, we failed to do so. So, so I requested it be on the agenda early in the year, so, you know, we have, you know, we have an opportunity to talk, express our, our viewpoints, and hopefully give some direction to staff. So when we get to October, November, it's not a surprise to the 501(c)(3)'s, community organizations that come in here. They know what to expect, and then, you know, we've, we've given some criterion guidelines that we can work from. So, you know, I'm more interested, we're not, we're not having a vote tonight. I didn't request a vote. I wanted, you know, an open, transparent conversation, and if there needs to be a vote later on, we can. But, you know, everybody has an opportunity to be on the, on the record of how we want, how we want to fund these organizations going forward. And I'll just, you know, give my preference, you know, that kind of, how I've laid it out and would like to see it play out. And, you know, I've explained this a couple of times, the last, last couple of years we've done this on the budget cycle. I separate 501(c)(3)'s. I take the library and the fire department, I put them aside, and, and look at them differently. So the fire company and the library, you know, I would like, you know, they're not immune from, from some of these budgetary discussions, and would peg them to Radnor's revenue forecast. So if, if we don't see the revenue and we fall short, then the library and the, the fire company, I don't believe should be funded at 100%. You know, they've got to feel some of that hit too. And they should know that going forward, going into the discussion, so they know what they need to raise through, through donations or through other means. And then for the other 501(c)(3)'s, you know, my thoughts are, you know, I would like to start them out at zero, not have them as a line item in the budget. And then, you know, if we're going to fund those, and, and, and they're above our, our revenue, what we've received in revenue, and there needs to be a tax increase, the people, the, the community need to understand that we're raising taxes to pay for 501(c)(3) organizations, particularly if they're not within the township. And so we need to be able to justify that to the community on, on why we're raising taxes if we, if we decide to do that. So that's my, my viewpoint, and what I would like to see right now, and would like to hear from my colleagues on, on how they'd like to fund these groups.
Can I just ask one quick question, and I'm gonna just speak. I think that the elephant in the room is, what is it, Suri Services? It's a, pretty much you're not 100% in the township. Is that the, I mean, obviously, the library's in there. We need to fund that. We need to fund, so are you talking just not in the township? Or is it in the township as well? So, like, is Wayne Art Center on or off the table?
Well, I, again, I think those are, so if, if the, the option I just laid out, it would be, you know, whatever, it'd be any 501(c)(3), separate it from the library and the fire company.
Fire, and what, and how about senior service?
I would start everyone at zero, and if we were going to fund those, we'd have to have a discussion and say, it's discretionary funding. So you would have a discussion and say, is, is it worth funding? And, and, you know, we-
So you just want to change the process, not necessarily the funding? I mean, I don't want this to be, look, and Jake, I'm, you know, I'm the first one that is like, you know, let's look at this funding, this group needs to chip in more. I think, I think you all know that. But I don't, I don't want it to be, you know, almost adversarial of where, you know, some of these groups may or may not.
I don't think it's adversarial. I think it's how you create a budget and, you know, justify expenditures. Otherwise, you have, we had a 501(c)(3) come mid-year last year, and we funded, you know, in terms of dollar amount, you know, with resources and, and other resources, well, with resources and other means, it ended up being like an $80,000 or $90,000 expenditure.
So you just want to change the process, the initial process?
I just don't think there should be line items.
Pardon?
I don't think there should be line items for specific organizations. I think that needs to be a discussion, and it's not a set-line item. If we want to use discretionary funding to, to support, then, then we do that during budgetary season. But it's not a given going in.
I mean, I would entertain it. I can't vote on it now, but if you want to forward something to me, I'll, I'll look at it and give an honest, I'm not gonna say yes or no. I don't know what it is. But I under, I understand, I mean, I have issues as well with some of the funding, but I also, you know, where we fund our money, they do good work, and they're, obviously, we're not giving it to some unnecessary entity. So I, I understand that, I understand the balance. If you want to forward something to me, I'll-
But it is discretionary, and it amounts to, you know, $200,000. And what was the, Bill, what was the shortfall last year in the budget? Were we around 400, 500?
Yeah, we were in the neighborhood of, yeah, between 400,000 and 500,000.
So, so half of the shortfall was, you know, if we took those organizations out, we're, you know, closer to a balanced budget.
The problem with just kind of saying there's $400,000 of shortfall and $200,000 is attributable to 501(c)(3)'s is you're putting the rabbit in the hat a little bit. You're saying the fire company and the library don't count as 501(c)(3)'s arbitrarily, and the others arbitrarily do. I would say that, like, to be clear, I don't disagree with you. I think the fire company and the library do indeed fall into a different bucket, but I would go a step further and say, so does the Wayne Art Center, so does the Senior Center. And as a result, what we're really left with, when you cut those out, is like $15,000 that goes to the Historical Society, and what, I don't recall that we funded Suri Services last year? We did? I mean, we're not talking about a lot of- Suri Services last year? We did? I mean, we're not talking about a lot of money. We're talking about less than $50,000.
But the fire company, if we don't fund, if we don't fund it, we have to fund it regardless.
I want to be cautious because I am not in any way suggesting that we should not, but no, we don't have to. We should, we will, no matter what, but we don't have to.
The alternative is not having a fire company.
The alternative is not having a library. The alternative is not having a senior center. The alternative is not having an art center. I think that we need to have all of those things, and they are all in the nature of municipal services that we have pushed onto 501(c)s, which now do some degree of fundraising on their own to the benefit of the taxpayers, and we end up backstopping them for everything else. I do think that there is value to having a historical society, so I don't want to play that down. I live in a historical house myself, and I see the value in having people who keep track of it. They've come into my house and told me neat things about it. But my real issue with spending a lot of time fighting about them is it's just not enough money to be worth, the juice is not worth the squeeze, basically. So, I mean, I'm not saying that, I think that the conceptual framework that you have developed is a bad one. I'm just saying that I think the real fight is over which of these 501(c)(3)'s are the ones that are core, that we're going to fund no matter what. And if the answer is you agree with me, and it's those four big ones, then we're not left with enough to fight about. If you agree and you say it's really only the library and the fire company, or maybe it's just the fire company, you don't have to have a library. Nobody's house is gonna burn down if you don't have one. I think that would be a mistake, but we're just kind of arbitrarily drawing lines. What's the rationale?
Well, to be fair, we're arbitrarily drawing the lines now because there are plenty of 501(c)(3)'s, and we're funding six or seven of them.
I would suggest that the ones that we fund now and should fund going into the future are the ones that provide quasi-municipal services. So there's not a lot of municipalities who do a lot of the really great things that 501(c)s do, but we just, as a municipal entity, are not involved with finding a cure for cancer. And with me on the board, you really don't want to be, because I went to law school, not to medical school. But that's a 501(c)(3) that we would not and should not fund.
Well, again, my position, and I think all of the organizations are great organizations. I, you know, I visit most of them, and I'll be at the Art Center at the end of February, hopefully, for the current exhibit. But, you know, when we're looking at $200,000 a year, and we have a shortfall, you know, it's not in our charter to, again, it's discretionary funding, and somewhere along the line, some previous board decided that these were the six that we needed to fund.
But it's not $200,000 a year. You're arbitrarily saying it's $200,000 a year.
Well, it was $200,000 last year that this board spent on-
No, no, it was 2 point some odd million dollars that this board spent on 501(c)s.
Mr. Tate, do you have those numbers?
I'm taking, I'm taking-
I do.
The fire company and the library out of the equation.
I understand, and I keep saying that's arbitrary.
It is.
Can we-
Everything this board does is arbitrary.
Just for clarification, yeah, and there's a lot of discretionary spending that's not on 501(c)(3). Mr. Tate, do you have the actual numbers? We're going between 50 and 200,000 here. Do you know what we spent to support community organizations that are not the library and not the fire department?
Yes, Madam President, that total for the 2023 budget is 220,500 between four groups: Wayne Senior Center, Wayne Art Center, Radnor Historical Society, and Suri Services.
And if you subtract out the Art Center and the Senior Center, what is left?
$50,000.
So, I mean, that's where Jake's number comes from, and that's where my number comes from. I'm suggesting that there are four that are core instead of two that are core.
So I was hoping that there would be a little bit more of a concrete proposal to respond to tonight. You know, this feels very familiar. It feels like the same conversation we have at the budget period where we bounce it back and forth, and then, to your point, Commissioner Abel, then it's too late to sort of pull the rug out from somebody who is expecting it because we hadn't told them otherwise. So I think that's how the vote always goes through with the other commissioners who are more, who are supportive of the, of the, even the process of making these charitable, making these contributions to charitable organizations. I come out of the fundraising world, and I had, you know, sort of given time, I can probably sketch this out into a full proposal, but I think I've said it from the day as before, that I would envision that we would decide on a number of, that would create a fund, and it would be a fund that is a municipal grant. And any organization that qualifies to whatever criteria we put in place, basic services only, must be in the township, budget's below X amount, you know, whatever the criteria is that this board thinks are the important factors to consider, it's an open call. And each year, it is discretionary, and we can organize either a citizen-led committee of sort of grant reviewers, those who would review the proposals and make recommendations, or it could be a subgroup of the board, so that commissioners making that decision. So if we were to change process, I would really put some process in place. Any other comments on this?
The only other comment I have is that budgets, the, I mean, the variance from year to year, COVID one year, and I don't necessarily disagree that you decide, to your point, in the process, but I think it's got to be married well before the budget, where you know how much money is there and how much you can spend. So it's not that I'm against your process. I think that there are a lot of valid points to it, Jake, but I think it's, unfortunately, it's kind of a cart before the horse, because you got to know where you are at the end of the year and how much you have. And to that extent, maybe the money shouldn't go there. Maybe it should. Maybe it should go back as, so we don't have to raise taxes, or maybe we could give a tax rebate, or maybe there are capital projects too that we can look at. So, like, I am 100% with you, and I get it. I just, I think that that would be up to finance to kind of steward along the budget, where we at, where we're looking at. And then, I guess we could have a fina, I guess we're all members of the finance committee that never meets. We could have a conversation about that, and then I would want to hear everything. But to your point, I think that this should be done earlier in the year than in November or October. It should be done July, if we can get a sense. And then we should have scenario, if we hit this number, if we have a higher number or a lower number, kind of on what we want to do. And it's kind of hard to do, because it all has to be done in an open forum, and, you know, and you do need that sunshine, it's important, but at the same time, a lot of these commissioners could get, and these groups could get their arms pulled in a million different directions. So, like, I hear you. I just, I need to digest more of this, and listen to what you said, listen to what Morris said, and everybody said, and come up with a better plan.
And I think I'd be open for a pot of money that is there, that can be drawn from, which caps, you know, put a cap on how much this board is going to spend on community organizations. So, I mean, if that's the will of the board and the direction we want to go, I mean, I'm okay trying that, just so there's some parameters in place.
Put it in a resolution. It doesn't have to be a finite amount, $200,000. It could be 5% above X amount of whatever is not budgeted, but that also needs to be weighed against, I mean, there are a million capital projects that are unfunded as well. So I hear you, like, and, you know, what I said, like, we're giving 503 money, taxable money to charities. We don't get the write-off, so it's kind of like, like, almost like a non-double dip, so to speak. So, like, I hear all the sides of this. I just, like, come up with a resolution and let's send it to the board, and let's take a look at it. I'd be very open to that.
Yeah, I actually agree with that. I think having a process is going to be important, and that it's not a last-minute discretionary thing in November or December. Whether it's a pot of money that people apply for specific needs, the roof needs to be done on the, whatever, you know, that kind of thing. I think that that's right, and you would have some definition of the size of the pot, but that it would be known and that people would have time to sort of apply, if you will, for these things. And you could put whatever else, you know, you have to be a township business, you have to be, you know, whatever other guidelines you want on it, but, and obviously, a 501(c)(3).
Yeah, you're not wrong, Jake. I just, I just think, I wanted to see something.
Yeah, it needs process.
I agree, probably 95% of what you say, just want to see something, and let's send a draft around. We can all look at it, and if we can come up with something, I think that, yeah, I mean, you have very valid points.
Okay. I mean, that, helpful discussion. You know, honestly, I wasn't putting together, I wasn't putting a lot of time into writing anything, bringing it before the board and having it redlined and rejected right away. So to get other people's thoughts and kind of understand where people are coming from is helpful.
Any other comments on this issue?
Oh, can I make one comment?
Of course.
Sorry. It reminds me of, say, a town, and they had a senior center, and they have a lot of volunteers there that help out, and they do ask the town for money to help out with them. But then they're like, oh, we're not going to fund you anymore, so you're on your own. So then they just close the thing. But then the residents are like, we need the senior center. So they go to the township and ask the township to run the senior center. Then it's, you know, way more expensive to do than just keeping a nonprofit doing what they do.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other discussion on this one, so Commissioner Abel, I'm gonna, I think you've got some ideas from us. If you would like to start a first draft, I'd be happy to work with you. Thanks. Moving on to reports from board liaisons. Is there any report out from our boards and commissions?
Yeah, no real reports, but Fenimore is always interesting. So if you're home, you can come to the next Radnor Rec, pardon me, the Radnor Recreational Board Committee.
Sean, real quick on Fenimore. What's the status with the building structure there with the blue tarp on it? Is there an update?
Yeah, I can, I can provide a quick update on that. Based on the ongoing conversations that have taken place at the Parks and Rec Board, there was a motion passed by that board that requires the next round of engineering and design work. So Tammy and Steve Norsini have been working with those, specific to the stable building, Gannett Fleming, to obtain a design, a design proposal that would take the concepts that were presented to the, in public in the Parks and Rec meeting, create bid documents, and allow us to move forward with the rehabilitation. So that's specific to the stable. At the same time, there's the larger park improvements. That's with Gilmore Engineering, and we're kind of on the same path there as well. So we're, we're in the final steps of getting those cost proposals nailed down. My expectation is, is that those will, those cost proposals will have to come back to this board because they're over $7,500. And then the conversation will shift right back to Parks and Rec for the application of the product that comes out of those.
Well, sorry to interrupt. I drove by there.
No, 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 and on that note, I'm not gonna talk about any more parks improvements, you know, but they're always there. Odericio, we're looking at. So always, if you're out there and you're a user of the parks, I think the parks is what makes Radnor such a great place to live. Please come out. We always welcome your opinion. Just a quick shout out to Tammy and her crew. They do a wonderful job. The daddy-daughter dance was always, I think it sells out in about 10 minutes. Great job there. I know that there is a trip to Washington DC. That is April 22nd, right in time for the cherry blossoms, but we do have a little bit of warming. My daffodils are up early, so maybe they'll be out a little bit earlier. But always a lot of great, wonderful things. So please, go to the website. It's got a lot of wonderful things that you can do with your family, all ages. You don't have to have kids. The willows, everything from the willows to the trails as well, to our parks. We have Little League here. So thank you to Tammy and her staff. We appreciate it.
Any other reports from committees? I will just, a quick announcement that the Environmental Advisory Council has a survey that's still open. We'd love to see more feedback. I'm not sure where they are on responses now, but we extended keeping that open, I think it was till the end of February. I could, I could, okay, I'm seeing a nod from the back. Thank you, Sarah. So it's on the website. Please go, give us your opinion. They're trying to elicit feedback from the community to understand what environmental issues are important to our residents so that they can focus their priorities in the coming year. So please take the survey, and we'll see what comes out of that. Any other committee reports? So I will move to new business. I think Commissioner Farhi wants to bring something up in new business.
Sure. Is it new business or old business at this point, or it doesn't matter? Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. So there are a couple people here tonight, and I want to thank them for staying, and I do want to talk and address the whole Villanova garage issue. And there are also people that have emailed me, and I have spoken to, and I've heard from a lot of people. And I do want to say thank you. Thank you to them. Thank you to planning. We have two members of our planning commission here, as well as neighbors, as well as even neighbors from Lower Marion Ward 6, which is Andy Gaverance Ward, he borders, or it's adjacent on County Line Road. So, thank you. I was at the meeting, was it last Thursday, and I just want to address some concerns. I want to put something on the record, and I actually am gonna call a vote. I don't know if I'll get a second to send this listener. So prior to that, I do want to say that my concerns are shared with members of the planning committee, as well as the residents when it comes to traffic and the parking. But for me, and they are major issues, as we know, Sarah Pilling, you were at the meeting, you talked about the pinch point. You have the R5 on one side of, so if you go north on Ithen, 300 feet, you have the R5, which is pretty much a one-lane little tunnel, subject to bridge strikes. And if you go south, you have a very narrow two-lane that underpass, which is the trolley line, which, yes, there are also bridge strikes there as well. So it is kind of that perfect storm for a pinch point. To Ms. Winters, I wish, Roberta was here. She said that when you have that, and you have a lot of cars and people using ways and whatnot, they navigate through the neighborhoods, and they're going to be using Lowry's, which is the street where I used to live on, as well as Garrett Avenue. Can't really use Ithen again. You have that pinch point, and they'll be going through the neighborhoods all throughout around Orchard and whatnot. So traffic is potentially an issue. I will say that I do believe that the parking would actually help, more parking there would actually help alleviate some of those concerns, but with more parking, sometimes the issue is, could the growth be not necessarily well thought out? We can put something here because we have the parking, so it's by right. So they can, Villanova may be able to go ahead with things, that it's by right, and the neighbors may have less say on it when it comes to certain items, but then things have to go to planning as well as zoning. The main issue that I have is the height. It's 38 feet now, or by, I guess by ordinance, they can go as high as 38 feet. They want to go 52 feet. That's 52 feet plus lights, which is 60 feet. And I believe that that is an escalation, because if the hardship is why they're going to go to zoning- to go to zoning is, well, it's 38 feet, we want 52 feet. And well, if you did 52 feet, we want, and the next project, 65, and then it's just an escalation, almost like an arms race, how high can we go? And then what's thought out? So, and to, much to my point is, I do believe that, you know, the university is a big stakeholder here in Radnor. They are going to need to grow, but they're on a landlocked, tiny, little area and it's always going to be a chicken or the egg scenario. We can't build if we don't have parking, but if we don't have parking, we can't build. And it becomes that circular argument that a lot of the neighbors have contacted me about. Just a couple more points. The one thing that I didn't like, a couple of things that I didn't like is, and this is just, again, more of an issue of process, that this is, it doesn't come in front of an elected body. It goes to the planning committee, which is appointed, and zoning is appointed. So again, I believe that this body, if there's appetite, which I don't think there is, is to send the solicitor to at least represent those neighbors and those people that have reached out to me that have concerns and are against it and want a more well-thought-out plan. If zoning does not give them relief, then it will have to come back to the board. If they do, this board is going to have to appeal it and then it becomes in court and then it becomes a long, drawn-out and oftentimes expensive process. The other thing that I didn't like too, and I think MJ, you brought up, that I just didn't like the fact that, I guess Villanova has known that this has been an issue for a while. So the fact that they had a neighbors' meeting sandwiched in between the planning meeting and then the zoning meeting, it just didn't give enough time to have the neighbors give valid input. And that to me, if you want to talk about transparency and you want it to be a group effort and a collaborative effort, I just, I don't see that. And I am taking a step back and saying, we should have a, much more of a collaborative effort with the neighbors, not after planning. And then I kind of want to end with this. Again, my issue is height. My issue is the view shed. I live in Ward 7. Ward 7 is the smallest, probably most densely populated area in Radnor. We always talk about, well, we like to see the cows in our drossing, or we like the open space. We don't have a lot of open space in Ward 7. So the little that we have, we have to protect. But what I don't want on top of not having open space is just higher and higher and higher height, whether it's from the stadium lights, which was not particularly, I mean, that ended up in court and that was pretty much the Villanova, again, unfortunately asked for, years ago, they seemed that they asked more for, how do you say, not permission, they asked for acceptance. It's late. But my concern is this, if Villanova wants more parking, that's fine. They can go underground. And the reason why they can't go underground, I was taught at the meetings, because there's a sewer line there. Well, it seems to me that Villanova knew that eventually this, these buildings have a certain lifespan. So if you go underground, when they built that CICD, that HSB1 parking garage was past, was past its peak, meaning if it averages 10 or 20 years, we're at year 13 or 14. So they knew that sooner or later that was going to have to get rebuilt. So they can go lower. They may have to, you know, move some lines, a sewage line, whatever. And as far as I'm concerned, I don't care if they want to go five stories down below and put 100, put 1,000 parking spots there. I'm actually fine with it, okay? Because it's, the issue is the view shed and higher and higher and higher. Because they've run out of, they've run out of room to build. They've totally run out of room to build and all they can build at this point is up. And for me, as a resident of Ward 7, representing a lot of my other residents, I believe that we should protect our view shed. Couple more things. That's, you know, that's probably going to be it. So I know that I can't ask for members of the community to come up. I would love to and I would love to hear some of them actually speak at the end of public comment and I've asked a bunch of you to say. But with that being said, I, I do want to almost take a roll call here. I'm going to make a motion here and maybe I got a second or maybe I don't, but I would like to do this in the, in the public forum. I'm going to make a motion.
So I'm going to, I'm going to call a point of order. We had it on the agenda. It was listed as a discussion, so the community saw it as a discussion.
But it's new business.
Right. We put things on agenda so community members have knowledge that there's going to be a vote. And prior to the meeting, we called this item off, so if anybody had been here, they could have left. I just, I'm going to lean into our solicitor here, but I don't think it's appropriate.
I have a right to call a vote on anything. Just because it's not, just because it's not on the agenda.
Sean, it has to be on the agenda to vote on it. Remember, there was a discussion about, you know, this, I mean--
We're always looking--
There was a discussion about participate in the zoning hearing board. That's what you asked in executive session, right? That discussion was there, there wasn't any support for it. That's why it was taken, the discussion was taken off, but there's no vote involved with this particular--
Well, I can ask to send, I can ask to send the solicitor. I mean, I have that right as, I mean--
But you--
You guys don't have to second it. You don't have to vote for it.
You've already done that.
When? When did I do that?
There was a discussion in executive session.
Okay.
And the majority of the board, I think it was four to two.
I don't know if it's four to two.
But the majority of the board wasn't willing to go that path. You described some of the other discussion already in executive session about, the township's always a party to zoning hearing board applications. Whether I'm there or someone else is there, we're always a party. We don't even have to show up.
We, you know what? There was a time when the former manager was here and it was not on the agenda and we voted. There's a million times that I've been here, and I've been here for six years, where items that are not on the, not on the agenda, get a vote and they get direction and they at least maybe take consensus. So if I can't get a vote, I would at least take consensus on whether, on that.
You could certainly--
And we were, and not all the commissioners were at that executive, at that executive session.
I think one commissioner that's not here, there was a discussion between commissioners and--
All right.
It's in her ward and she was not in favor of your--
It doesn't, it's all of our wards, okay?
She wasn't in favor of it.
And it's going to be in another commissioner's ward in about three months.
Okay. But I'm just saying, in terms of making a motion and voting on something, it's not appropriate.
Well, and then I'll end with this--
But if you want to take, take a poll of your fellow commissioners, you can do it.
Great, then I will take a poll. But I do find it slightly ironic that I've sat here a couple of months ago and I was told, oh, on an issue that affects Ward 7 specifically, no, issues about height and parking are going to be addressed in a comprehensive plan. So once again, I believe that this is an issue that should be, if, we should not be fighting from behind, that we should not have to wait until after this is in court because once this is in court, they're kind of grandfathered in whatever they want if they win or lose. So I am, to me, I find that frightening that you won't allow a vote, but that's fine. I will ask, you know, for those, I'll just scratch my nose and say as an aside, if you're in favor of sending, you know, of having the solicitor sent, if you'd raise your hand, but it's not a vote. So I may be the only one that's in favor of sending the solicitor, but, you know, the residents have spoken, the residents have spoken loud and clear. I have not heard one person that is for it and I have to say that from what I hear or what I don't hear. If we're elected to, if we're elected to represent our residents, I'm disappointed, so extremely. And that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Sean, but I think it's important, and I don't think you want to, like, you don't want us to vote tonight on this because you're setting the precedent then. And please don't, please don't reference anything, the previous manager and what happened under that tenure. You know, I wouldn't call that good governance. And what we're trying to do is show good governance and consistency. And you've argued not to vote on issues that aren't listed on the agenda as up for vote because the public's not aware of it. If they were, if they were aware and had and wanted a voice, they should be able and willing to come talk before the board and have their, have their voice heard and on record. We wouldn't have that tonight.
Well, we would if what happened in a private session was, was a little bit different, but you know, I think that certain members of the community--
The agenda only says discussion.
Yeah, but those--
Can I just clarify? Remember, any commissioner can put any topic on the agenda to be voted upon. That didn't happen.
And I purposely didn't put a vote on the discussion on community organizations. I just wanted a discussion. So if you want to vote, you do have to be clear and list it so the public is aware. Otherwise, even if I supported your position, I wouldn't support a vote because the public's not included in this.
All right. Well, then, then that's my fault that I was, I guess I was hoping that there would have been commissioners that wanted to listen to the residents and I would have done that. I guess I had a little bit too much faith in the board and leadership.
So I'm going to move on to old business. Is there any old business? I will now open it for public participation. Anybody like to speak? I am seeing none. I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
And a second? Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye. Thank you.